Okay, roll call.
Larry here.
Here.
Tom Hilbert.
Here.
Here.
Norm Foley.
Here.
Michelle Luttrell.
Excused.
In thirty seconds.
Oh, all right.
Okay. Public participation rules. Number one, please wait for the chair to acknowledge you before you speak. Number two, begin by saying your name and address. Number three, give us your comments, opinions, or questions on the issue being discussed. Four, to ensure that everyone has time to speak and that we can address other items on the agenda. We may limit an individual's speaking time to five minutes. If time permits, we may allow one additional time period to provide new information. Number five, please be respectful of applying commission applicant and your neighbors. Again, thank you for attending. Tom Hilbert, Chair. Okay, adoption of agenda. Is this where I add the? Okay, we want to add under correspondence, we want to add a report from, report oh seven dash two zero two two, a modify, review of as per Denise Klein, this one is. Okay, here's Cory. All right. Okay. Oh, we need a motion for that? What's that? Okay. We need a motion to add Denise Klein.
I'll make a motion.
Support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Okay, added. Okay, anything, uh, I believe that's it. We need a motion to approve the agenda, adopt the agenda. Norm and Larry supports, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, approval of minutes, May ninth, two thousand twenty-two. Motion. Larry? Second. In favor? Aye, opposed? Cory, you're in favor also?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, public comment. Is there anybody on remote, Lynn? No, okay. I believe you guys are with the case, so we'll let you comment one during the case. I don't think we have any other public comment. Okay, now the court and the correspondence, we have the report oh seven two zero two two from Richard, Rick Duel, and then we added the report, like a modification to that report by Denise Klein. Okay, then I guess that would be item. Yeah.
Make that motion.
Okay.
File or save correspondence. All second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Okay, section B, notice my intent to update master plan, Preskill County and the Village of Poson.
I made a motion to actually file all of them.
Okay. All right, public hearing. Case number P dash zero seven dash two two, BTD Holdings LLC requests a special approval use for an adult-use marijuana dispensary. Property is located at two five zero eight US twenty-three, so parcel number zero one eight one zero three zero 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 one three nine zero zero in general business B two zone district. We need a motion to open public hearing.
I'll make the motion, Sparkle.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, we will let the applicant go first.
Excellent. Thank you very much for having me. My name's Cody Newman. I'm a driven design. We are an architecture firm located at one seventeen West Michigan Avenue in Battle Creek, Michigan. Um, we've represented Iconic on a handful of projects across the state of Michigan. This is for a marijuana provisioning center in an existing building. There's no expansion of that building as part of this. It's just reservicing the lot and redoing the interior and exterior of that existing building. A few things to note with this facility. This facility will be monitored by twenty-four seven three sixty-five cameras. So there's cameras that monitor every place except for restrooms in the facility on the interior and exterior. That's a requirement by the CRA, the Cannabis Regulatory Agency at the state. Um, all their other facilities are that way as well. They have three other facilities that are operational at this point across the state of Michigan. Uh, this facility in particular, another thing that comes up is odor is always a question on these facilities. There's no growing of marijuana or consumption at this facility. It's only the sales. Everything comes prepackaged, so there's no real issue with smells there. Nonetheless, Iconic always tries to take it a step further, so we have gone through and put in a carbon filter system in the HVAC to make for sure that there's no odors leaving the building as well as maintain a slight negative pressure. So all smells are within the building. Nothing will be from the outside. Our goal with all these projects is to renovate an existing building, make it, you know, add to the neighborhood value there. Uh, there's an emphasis on hiring local for all staff here. Uh, there'll be approximately ten to fifteen new jobs as part of this, uh, part-time and full-time staff, just depending on the position with managers. At any given point, there'll be, uh, three to four staff on premises, plus people coming in and out. Parking is not really as big of a concern at these facilities because the average time that, uh, patrons come into this building is about eight minutes. So even if there's a high volume of people, they're in and out. You know, it's, it's similar to like a liquor store where people come in, they understand what they want, they buy the product, and they leave. Um, pretty consistent flow of traffic in and out that way. Other things to note on the back end of the property, there's a green belt between, um, there's a large grass area there between any other space. Um, there's no other provisioning centers, schools, or anything in close proximity to this. Um, and with that, I am happy to answer any questions that you all have.
You have eight, eight parking spots, and I assume the employees are parking behind, or is that their?
The eight parking spots includes employees at this point. We, yep. There's no additional parking behind the building at this point. It's the, basically a green space behind.
Okay.
How did you come up with nine spaces? I looked it up, and I cannot, nine, eleven and a half or twelve.
Um.
Everything I could find, and even dual sets, so I put, it's a.
I will review that. I believe we looked through the ordinance to find that. I don't recall the specific section of that, but I will review that. Um, and if needed, we could add a few spaces up by the road, and we'd be happy to do that to comply.
I, I, I think your parking is short, just the fact that you're saying nine spaces, and I think it's short by what I calculate. You can check that out. But the other part, you know, you could have two, three, four employees there. You gotta have spaces taken out. Uh, all of a sudden, there's people backing up and moving around, trying to jockey for a place to park, and I think you got plenty of room for extra additional parking places up towards the street.
Yep, and we'd be, we'd be happy to add that as part of the site plan.
And the other part on that, we didn't see any landscaping plan because I was there today looking at it, and there's, I'm not sure if there's a curve all the way in there, but some of those curves have hair over where they just dirted over, and if they cleaned it up like the rest of all along the road, there's no sidewalk, which I'm sorry to say. But I don't know if we, you put a sidewalk there, but it would connect to nothing. But I think if something could resemble the rest of what's going on there, you'd also have, be making yourself some parking spaces.
Yeah, yep, we'd be happy to add that with the site plan.
Anybody got any comment on parking?
It seems like it's very little parking, so, uh, you know.
Well, it's, uh, it's seven hundred forty square feet, and I could not find on the sheets that you sent from township what the size of the building was. All I got was seventeen hundred forty square feet. I'm assuming that's the inside of the building.
Yeah, the building's fifteen hundred square feet total.
How many?
Uh, one thousand five hundred square feet.
Says seventeen forty on the township papers.
That's what we, we went and measured the physical building, and that's, that's what we came up with on that. But, um, yeah, nonetheless, that's what we had ran the calculations.
We call that the card.
The assessment card.
Assessment card says seventeen hundred forty square feet.
Okay.
But it doesn't give any dimensions of the building, and I was trying to convert some of this stuff. All of a sudden, it dawned on me, it said, uh, your sight line was sixteen to a foot, and all of a sudden, remember, you've shrunk this down from your original plans to fit it in so you could send it off to an email, because this is definitely not, uh, one sixteenth, an inch equals one foot.
Oh, yeah, that's a.
Yeah, we're at half size.
That sounds crazy.
Yeah, no. Yes, yep, nope, it's supposed to be twenty-four by thirty-six pole size sheet.
And you got a place for a dumpster over there, and I still can't figure it out, but is there roughly fifty foot between the building and the north property line?
Approximately.
Okay, that's where you're gonna put the?
Yeah, on the far, on the far north ends where it'd be locating the dumpster enclosure. Um, and also, just to note, there's no marijuana waste that goes in that. That's pretty much just for staff, lunches, uh, any, you know, boxes or anything. All marijuana waste has to be, uh, taken away by secure transport.
I guess my, my question would be to ingress and egress, because I also would concur with the mission that it's a deficiency of parking spots, especially with the proposed staff on site. Um, has M dot commented in terms of ingress and egress on any plan or not?
No, at this time, we're planning to reuse the existing curb.
Well, that's up as a commercial drive, so.
Yeah.
It, when it was built, so.
Yeah, but they, as of late, M dot and Rogue Commission especially, would like to have added a kind of review.
Okay.
And so, but there's no curve cuts and it's existing, but the Rogue Commission has upped it forty-five.
Because they consider this a change of use, right? So they could, they could.
But if it's, if, if they didn't want to have a negative impact, there's not going to be any manipulation of the curve that exists. Um, but they would like, they, they would have their calculations in terms of ingress and egress, which they're against, I believe this commission's perception that the parking spots presented in this first iteration is deficient.
Okay, and we're, again, we're happy to add more.
Yeah, you have, you have the space.
Mm-hmm.
So we have to, uh, we have to get facilities to M dot then.
No, if they.
We don't, okay.
Yeah, no, they, they get.
They have a set, okay.
They didn't, I always throw it out, so, and I haven't heard of that, so.
Okay.
Who is going to review and gore the landscaping design to, that it meets our specifications?
That would be myself.
Okay.
As zoning administrator, I guess if you have.
Because we don't, there was.
This commission wants to have stipulations, then I'll know what your stipulations are to make sure that they're followed.
I think we'd like to see a landscape design at this board. I think I would, uh, so we can see what it is and put our two cents in on. Is that the South Bay corridor is starting to wake a little bit, and yours could be the dominant starting point of cleaning up some of these things and making it better, probably not a whole lot of extra work on your part, but it could sure start a, a good thing moving down the road.
Yeah, and we'd be, we'd be happy to do that, happy to provide that.
Yeah, their submission was on a timed clock to get it in for the deadline date, uh, and then obviously some things that follow, uh, the suspicion of it works, so as long as we're, uh, willing to follow the stipulations.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you want to see, if you, there's certain things I, I haven't looked, I guess it's in the printed out part of the, the site plan. I don't know if you have considerable, considerable on the landscaping in the plan, I don't think.
On the, um.
He doesn't really have any, no.
The, the green belt isn't on that plaque. So, yeah, I love your interview idea of saying there's a green space in the back there, that's currently called, you know, other schools, but that's on there.
Yep, at the very back of ours, there's a row of trees that's, you know, is part of that, but you are correct. There's, there's currently not much on the front. Again, we're happy to landscape that little island up towards the front, uh, especially to enhance and to match what's around, uh, the surroundings.
It's good things for involved. Yeah, on, on, on your neighbors. Is there any comments or thoughts of doing anything along that south line where you only got four and a half feet between the building and the property line? You gotta put four foot sidewalk.
Yep, that's to go just to the, the side door there.
Right.
Um, but the rest of it, I mean, there's, gosh, probably about six or seven feet. There's just grass was the plan, and then grass behind the building as it currently is, was the.
I mean, actual property line is, or any thought of between you and your neighbor of anything discussed, of anything going there?
Oh, fencing or anything is that what you're referring to, or?
Anything.
Not at this time. It would remain as is.
Because I think both your, both sides, the north and the south, have open driveways connecting to your parking lot.
Yep.
So is that something you want to maintain and keep that openness?
At this time, that's what we were planning for.
Any comments on your neighbors? Thoughts on that?
Do you know if the neighbors fed? I haven't had any conversations with them.
Very little in the gas station.
We have not heard otherwise at this point.
And you are recapping that we put in Nashville then?
Yes.
I guess one, if, if I may, Chair.
Good, yes.
Snow, snowstorm was one of the things that we need to define better.
Yeah, and we're happy to do that. Where we would put that is, uh, just south of that dumpster enclosure. There's kind of an opening between the building and towards that grass area, and that's what we were planning for. Um, snow removal would happen, uh, before or after business hours. Obviously, if a big snow occurs during the day, they'd do it then as well, but the plan would be is it would just be, uh, stored in that location there, so not up by the street per se.
We qualify in reference to with the state or have you folks, have you already applied to the state for this license? To, as far as the site plan and whatever.
Yes.
So you can go forward until we process.
So if the.
It's our first one, so.
If the. If the permit's approved, then it will be, there'd be stipulation, of course, that you have to, and you, you, you said you own two others, so you must have, have gone through this.
This meeting, anything that we want to agree on, we're one hundred percent team players. If you want to see a fine tree, we're gonna put it in a fine tree. If you want a sidewalk, it's the same answer. So we're, we're here to be part of the community and be great team members, so. Just be kind of agree on that tonight. It becomes part of the situation of prior to us receiving the CO, that we would make sure that all of that stuff, uh, so we would need backup. Yes, they did exactly what we asked for landscaping, different things. We do have, there's that time in between, but we're gonna put in for the license, we do have to have.
And from your, uh, perspective, sir, from this point forward, with your experience thus far with the state and the law, what is the turnaround time from getting the nod of a planning commission to actually starting internal operation?
Opening a store? Uh, we've been doing it in three months, what?
Right around there.
Depend, there's a lot of areas. Uh, one of them being your construction crew, and how much time are they taking with that, what the permit process is, and how, you know, there's just, there's so many things not, I would. Uh, our Bureau of Fire inspection in our last store, he was there for about seven minutes and signed off, because we've done it before, we follow the rules. Um, and the MRA, because of our first one, they didn't even come at first, and they did a virtual tour. So it just depends on the inspector. It's just, there's so many variables to it, but I'd like to say that we initially were kind of hoping and shooting for a Labor Day type opening, but now we're probably drifting into the end of September.
And you're Dan, right?
Sorry.
Kevin, okay, Kevin Beebe, okay.
Open question.
This is adult use on, you're not correct, and license.
Oh, this not, not medical?
Right.
Okay.
I didn't go on the night.
No. No, we opted in and out, well, transversely, it was opted and opt out, and opt out with the difference between civil and state, uh, but in our ordinance, actually, we allow adult use.
Right now, the plan was just for adult use. Um, we have, oh, we have both. So we have a medical facility, now we're just, both medical and recreational. Uh, we opened both Southside Grand Rapids, that is panel, we allow recreation. Two weeks later, we're holding a little gig, uh, and that one's also on there.
It just says on a, a notarized owner permission that it's, uh, either medical or recreational, so I guess that we, we weren't sure of that.
Yep, and on the, on the plans, we put adult use.
Okay, okay.
Right in the very front there.
So are you going for both or just the one?
Just the adult use.
So what, what is our next is to say the things that we'd like to see an updated version and?
Um, there's a couple, okay, snow search question, he answered the. Answered that, okay. And then the, uh, did you, did a member see the, uh, comments by Denise about the, on the section six oh two? Uh, number one, in, in addition to the, what Rick had, uh, the use, location, and size. The use, location and size of use, and the nature and intensity of the operation shall not be subject to, as to disrupt the orderly and proper development of the district as a whole, or be in conflict with or discourage the principal permitted uses of the adjacent or neighboring lands and buildings. And then Denise added, no potential issues identified, then she said adjacent or neighboring lands slash buildings are commercial uses of, already developed a residential area, buts the rear of the property, but is flooded by five hundred and twenty feet of densely wooded area. The standard has been met. And then in B, she added the, the same thing. Uh, same comment about the residential area to the rear of the property is buffered by a dens- densely wooded area, five hundred and twenty foot in depth, facility will be designed to meet all standards from the state of Michigan for odor control and waste disposal. And you, you have addressed that.
Then we got maybe twenty feet improved, not five hundred and twenty. Five hundred and twenty feet of trees, but.
It's two different parcels.
Yes.
The remainder of their parcel, which has some red painted, the remainder, the vast majority.
Yeah, you can see it on the line here.
It's actually a land that helped be the public.
And if the, uh, I guess if the, uh, somebody's going to develop that further, they would, uh, um, they would be there first, so they would, uh, anybody developing it would have to would rela, would first facility would, would take preference. Okay, then on, uh, number two, traffic and access, she also said adequate access is provided off of twenty-three. Yes, twenty-three is already a heavy, heavily traffic road, so this use will not cause additional congestion. A turn lane is provided for left turn, turning traffic, two lanes are provided, traveling in each direction. This standard has been met. And then natural resources, uh, she added the natural wooded area to the rear of the property is existing and will be preserved. This standard has been met, so whatever, whatever is part of their parcel will, and we can't say what's going to happen beyond that, of course. Okay, and then okay, then our, we had proof of pre- prequalification, and you said that you cannot give us that proof until you have a.
Prequalification, you have to have that order to start the first one.
Oh, you do, okay.
Prequalification, I already prequalify to open any cannabis movement, etc.
Okay.
So you just prequalify once.
So we, we have, we know that.
That was not submitted, but if you email, I can send my, proof would be my license.
Yeah. Okay, okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay. Any comments?
They had here or the forty?
No, come on up. Well, that's okay. That's okay.
Bob Young, uh, business owner, US twenty-five oh nine, US twenty-three, so directly across the street, I believe, from what we're here. Uh, no, I'd glad to see development in our, in our area. Um, there was, wasn't there a licensed or unlicensed endeavor like right across the street anyway at one point? Was there?
There was in the same facility, uh, a very proactive, unlicensed venture.
I guess you did, yeah.
Licensed venture. I'm glad to see the licensing, by the way. Um, so I, I really can't say any growth is good growth, but, uh, within the meets and bounds and parameters given, I think, you know, any venture out of our way is good. So I really came in just to say that, that, uh, glad to see a development and not a vacant building, so, uh, I, I really can't think of anything negative, especially under the light of what's going on now. This is a, we just spent a couple of days in the Baltimore area. Above a Paul McCartney concert was one person advertising, was a great big cannabis flag. So it's marketing the stuff around the country. Uh, no, I just want to be here and register to say, good growth, no weeds, less blight is good, so you can do to help that, I'm good.
It's, the south corridor has it's not fast, but it is.
It's coming.
It's coming, yes, yes.
Much is coming back.
Well, I don't know about the. The Dunkin' Donut, what about the Dunkin' Donut? I don't know, that. Yeah, we'll finish this. What, that, that's not our business. Okay, I guess we can, I need a motion to close public hearing.
I make a motion.
Larry? Cory? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Okay, Nathan, you were saying I don't need to read all of, okay.
You know, you just need a, a motion, so you've already received and filed under correspondence, both documents in which you're cited.
Okay.
So the minutes will reflect as such, but then you, you can actually make specific motions. You can u- utilize both reports and their findings, whether it's, uh, Denise's or Richard's. Uh, they both have recommendations for approval, denial, et cetera, at the back. Um, and you make your motion, uh, and I implore this, this commission that there's any deficiencies in which, that were verbalized or that you want stipulated, so that I can make sure that. That were verbalized or that you want stipulated, so that I can make sure that as they continue to move forward with the state licensing. Uh, we don't slow them up, we keep having our building official apprise, uh, that way. Their permitting, we get them closer to, uh, their projected date rather than, uh, a downstream. Um, tell them what you want to do. I would make the light of, within this four door, I believe that. The M dot right of way is, uh, fifty foot from turn lane in this part, which. Every, every. Hundred linear feet of twenty-three has a different setback, but I, the only reason I mention that is that. Uh, if there's a request for additional landscaping, uh, please be considerate that. And M dot has a very stringent standards, uh, for, uh. Vertical height of vegetation in the right way, so that would be my only. Yeah, let's have a landscape of, but both, uh, covering shrubs, nothing vertical, so that you have any impediment to line it up.
And the parking, if you, if we're parking towards on M dot right of way. And I know the, uh, the four dealer used to be across the road. They had cars parked in, and that right of way, the plow came and. Shot all ice and damaged the cars and, uh. Of course, the dealer was, was upset, but he was parked in the right way, so I'm just telling you that, so.
I, I think there's a precedence of, once along there with the nice islands and the curves. I think you can just tie in with that and just continue making that a nice little quarter or longer.
We'll do that. Promise this property will look the best it's ever been here.
Good. I will make Mr. Young's place even.
The best it ever looked was little seeds with certain.
Frankie Mellon font played the art. I, I didn't hear it, but I, I, I heard people, people told me you did.
Those are lots of things. So, Frankie in the piano.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve this with following. Additions, changes, or violations, and I guess we add those in as we go along.
And we have the options of approving it with no. With no stipulations, approving with stipulations or denying. That's our. Our options.
My motion is to approve with stipulations, which we have to come with. Get them out there before we.
Yes. Okay, we'll have to. What are the stipulations?
One of them that I'd like to see is on the township card, it says seventeen hundred and forty square feet. You said you have fifteen something, I think something needs to be corrected, which also falls in with. The parking, which I think there needs to be definitely more parking places, especially some for your employees. Because you could get a lot of people come in, maybe they're only going to be there eight minutes, but. You get ten people coming there, that place park. Uh, so somehow get that corrected.
I guess Nathan or Kevin, who would?
Well, we'll be on.
Go get the correct.
We work well together.
Okay.
I'll take care of the stipulations, you'll take care of the building, and we're always.
Cause I believe you said you measured inside, maybe this is outside, but somehow the right things come.
I, I, I think even with the discrepancy in terms of the square footage of the building, that could have been the overhang.
Yes.
Been, uh, could have been an aerial GIS, uh, tracking, uh, for square footage or on, uh, seat of sale. Um, our, our files are seemingly sometimes not the same as counties and not the same as certain private property owners at times.
Okay, and then we'll, uh, we'll assign you with, uh.
I'll, I'll.
The, putting the proper amount of parking spots in there. Okay.
And I'd also like to see the landscaping, a couple of design that makes that area shine.
And we're going to give Nathan and Kevin that per- permission to, uh.
I guess we are.
Okay.
Inherently, it's already given.
Okay.
To me.
Anything, do we have anything else?
I think that there, uh, obviously it's, uh, they've already stated, uh, whatever, um. You guys would like to see, they just want to dot that eye across that key, uh, to be on the right side of everything, so that they can have the greatest level of success.
And then you, forward to Nathan, the copy of your.
I already gave them my.
Yes, okay, okay.
And we'll, we'll label the snow storage area too, but that's. This is our first one, first one in, first one everything, so welcome you guys, uh, to do well and make your. Business be a shining spot down that quarter.
So it's that, are we, anything else we have to add in there?
All support.
Okay. Then we'll do a roll call, right? Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I am gonna sign this.
Competition is the.
Okay, and you're going to sign for the applicant? Okay.
I think up at the road, there's like a certain area.
So does he take that one, Lynn, or?
Just to, yeah, I don't have a second plan, put it off.
Okay. He gets his copy then?
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the, uh. Cause. Anything else? Oh, what do you, what do you have there? Of the press scale and, uh, village opposing me?
Yeah.
Yes, we can, uh. So we just, that update of, the notice of updated master plan, we just have, we can review that if we choose or whenever we.
They're giving notes just like me.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
How we want to receive, um. We just want to like know how you want to receive it, something like that, one additional.
Well, it's just. Basically, it's just letting us know.
It's state law, so anytime like when you, this mission went through, uh, all of which. Friendly reminder, coming up in twenty twenty-three, we doesn't want to review a record plan and a master plan like our, shut it down to. Um, so those will be coming up at any time. Um, and then, and then putting, we just now, we have to give notification. So, oh, then as a county, as Alpena County, it's a trip without, so we actually had to with our zoning, uh, sent it to the press. It's just.
Just to let them know that.
It's a common courtesy. Of, you know, not now, that common courtesy was actually followed up, which we tipped the hat with our. I believe our master plan, did we combine with Alpena County, we broke our cycle of timing.
Yes, we did.
To, to actually start partnering together, so everybody's on the same cycle, because. Um, what some of the newer members. You don't ever recreate the wheel going through those processes. It's just what technologies or business models are new. And what are the newer strategies for residential and commercial development? So those are really the only implications of change. Uh, but those are primary documents that are going to be coming up recently.
There's four or five townships now on the same cycle, or three?
I believe there's, uh, three in the town. Three or four, yeah. Um, so we kind of do it jointly together, obviously, I cannot, uh. Scale of economics, it gives you a, a better, uh. Cost, but those are, those will be big activities. And then also, uh, you'll be getting the first volley back, uh, from the board and. The township, uh, starting the CIP process, the subchemical. That will actually, uh, set precedent to the, the track and the master plan, that would be this year. That will be turning around and then utilizing for budget. Budgeting for our next.
And that's, uh, uh, we have another training, right?
We're going to be sitting down and doing some joint things, uh, I'm gonna, I'm almost done with this, the rubric. Um, in time, and I keep going back with it to make it as simple as possible, because I just remember our training. Don't make it difficult, um, of which I seemingly continuously did.
Okay, so we're good with it, we're good with this, uh, press skill and.
Yeah, it's a tip of the hat, I would say, uh, request electronically, let's save one point three trees.
Yes.
Um. Because it's the same as Alpena County has, and in terms of an imperative point of view, it's, it's only a reference for common. Uh, we have no standing to make, uh. Any stipulations that there's. Nor any, any stipulations to a township within the same parent county, so it's always.
And then the planning and zoning, uh, essentials workshop.
Yeah, there's another one that popped up, I got.
On the twenty-second, I don't know.
That's on in Oscoda, but I just got a play, a wire, uh, from MTA, it's supposed to be another one July, I want to say it's July eleventh. Um, so there's, there's another opportunity there. Um, so if there's, especially you, you two and Michelle and Matt, that some of the newer members that even. Are, are, are elder statesmen of the group, um, there's some good training opportunities coming up, so.
Okay.
I mean.
Now, do we have to sign up somewhere for that June twenty-second?
Yes.
I know I had put that I was interested. I gave Michelle the information, um, so I had the forms all filled out and she's sending the check in. I hope, hope there's a confirmation, I have to come back. So you did get me in there?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
You've got me down for that, don't you, Lynn?
Yeah, I think it was pretty good, it's door, um.
Okay.
That's noon to four in Oscoda.
So the Trow Bridge developments going in the same.
Yes.
I would hope that your guys are going to.
We're going to ride together.
As long, as long as you get me back for five thirty to go.
I have two car seats in the back, I can put you guys in.
Okay, and wasn't there another? Um, CIP training?
No, not in the books, right?
No, okay, alright.
But there is another opportunity through MTA for, is it July twelve?
I think it's a twelfth, but we have a board meeting that day.
Okay, yeah, I don't. So. There's, if, if this upcoming one doesn't really work, or if you want to do both, just please let us know, because however, we can help. Make everybody feel more comfortable, especially getting ready to go into the management and direct. I want you to know any, any changes in laws or anything that kind of give you a better understanding.
Okay, thank you. We're good, right? Alright, we're done.